We are starting with an open mic session at 7:30. And the open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The settings of the sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the school committee understand numerous points of view. The committee will appreciate speakers keeping their presentation in three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public School District and discuss their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to roll the speaker out of order if he feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of the school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence fifteen minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Is anyone here to speak at open meeting? Anyone here to speak at open meeting? Or, open mic, sorry. Anyone here to speak at open mic? Seeing nobody here to speak at open mic, we will close the open mic session. And I would like to call to order the third special meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Pena?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
If you would please rise for a salute to the flag, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Nancy Ross, retired teacher, March 31st, 2022. First item on the agenda is a few minutes.
Make a motion to accept four of the meetings, the minutes of the meetings, Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee meeting on March 31st, 2022, Curriculum Subcommittee meeting on March 31st, 2022, Personnel Subcommittee meeting on March 31st, 2022, and the sixth regular meeting on March 31st, 2022.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right. Presentations, graduation dropout, update on data.
So each year, we like to come to this space to share out publicly our progress as it relates to increasing graduation rates and decreasing what we, you will hear in the presentation, we call pushout rates instead of dropout. And this evening, Deputy Superintendent Regiro is prepared to present that to you. So I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll start with graduation data and then move into dropout data and then into some of the research behind it and some of the programs and initiatives that the district is working on. And of course, it's not going to work.
Let me try it from here.
It worked when I tested it. Deb was my witness. That's Dawn's.
There it goes.
Did I keep?
No. They said you don't need it. It's on the web. You can always get it. So this first stacked column data slide shows the four-year graduation status of Lynn Public School students over the past eight years. As you can see, the graduation status from 2014 through 2019 had remained relatively the same, but over the past two years, the graduation rate made significant gains, pushing well past eighty percent in 2021. The dropping out without graduating rate fell to its lowest rate in eight years in 2021. Next slide, Pat. This line chart shows the four-year graduation rate over the past eight years for all students, students with disabilities, English learners, males and females. The graduation rate for this selected population has increased over the past two years. The L graduation rate continues to rise with four consecutive years of increases, and the graduation rate gap between the selected population narrowed greatly from 2020 to 2021. Next slide. This chart shows each of the Lynn Public School high schools' four-years graduation rate over the past four years. In 2021, the overall Lynn Public Schools graduation rate for each high school and combined as well was either its best or close to it over the past six years. With FECTO Leary, the decrease from school year seventeen eighteen is a significant and noticeable change. There is a reason for this decrease. At that time, Lynn Public Schools had had a sudden influx of newcomer students. FECTO Leary was chosen as the location to enroll these students. This decision needed to be adjusted, and during this time of transition back to their neighborhood schools, some of the students dropped out or were unenrolled for failure to attend. Because FECTO Leary serves a smaller population, losing even a small number of student greatly impacts their four-year graduation rate, as was the case here. You will notice that FECTO Leary has had bounce-back years and more over the past two school years. Next slide. I'll now transition to the dropout data. You can go to the next slide, Pat. This data displays the annual dropout rate for the Lynn Public School high schools over the past seven years. Lynn Public Schools dropout rates continue to fall and are now at their lowest recorded rate at 3.1%. Next slide, Pat. This chart shows the dropout rate within the identified subgroups as well as the overall student population over the past eight years. While the overall Lynn Public Schools dropout rate continues to fall, so does most of the race/ethnic subgroups. The same can be said for most of the other subgroups shown here. The African-American Black subgroup is almost down to zero. We clearly have more work to do as the Hispanic subgroup comprises the largest group of students who are dropping out. We continue to dig deeper into this data. The district has already begun the process of adjusting the supports and instruction for our L students, for one example, the restructuring of the ESL/ELD classes and support for L students at the secondary level. Next slide. The stacked column chart shows the annual distribution of Lynn Public School dropouts by program. Note that in these columns, the totals must equal 100%, so as one group increases, others must decrease. There has been a significant reduction in the percentage of dropout students who are in special education over the past eight years. The ELE student dropout rate continues to rise as the number of ELE students increases each year. I'm going to now go into what the research tells us. So the research says dropping out is a process, not an event. And when we think about dropout, sorry, I can't see that far, it's a process of disengagement which often begins in the early years of education. When we think about dropout rates and dropout prevention, our inclination is to think that this is a secondary issue and that the interventions reside at the middle school and high school levels. The reality is that the trajectory for dropping out of school begins at entrance in pre-K and K and is intimately connected to a student's attendance. Starting in pre-K, chronic absenteeism affects learning and school readiness. Attendance matters most for students who are the furthest behind. Students chronically absent in kindergarten and first grade are much less likely to read proficiently in grade three, a transition grade from learning to read to reading to learn. The trajectory for truly being at risk for dropping out is being set and established. By sixth grade, chronic absenteeism becomes a leading indicator that a student will drop out. It encompasses not just one, but a multitude of factors in terms of dropping out. There's individual factors, family factors, school factors, and community factors. These factors are frequently identified as pushout and pullout effects. There are four factors that contribute to dropping out. Individual factors, which include educational history, attitudes and behaviors, academic skills, and demographic characteristics. Family factors, which include family structure, economic circumstances, educational aspirations, and involvement in school. There are school factors, which involve school climate, discipline policies, teaching practices, relationships between students and adults, and community factors for community resources, peer groups, and role models. Next slide, Pat. Pushout effects are defined as situations or experiences within the school environment that heighten students' feelings of alienation and failure. Some examples are getting along with teachers or the lack of relationship building, not enough supports for Ls integrated within our instructional practices, suspension and expulsion, low grades, impersonal or intolerant school environment, bullying and harassment, social isolation, lack of involvement in co-curricular activities, academic and/or behavioral problems. These effects reinforce feelings of school failure. Pullout effects are defined as external factors that weaken and distract a student from the importance of school completion. Some examples here are adolescent pregnancy, poor economic circumstances and financial responsibilities, opportunities for employment, caretaking responsibilities. Students who leave school most often cite pushout factors as reasons for dropping out versus pullout. Next slide. So for each pushout and pullout effect, there must be a counter-push-in and pull-in effect that increases student engagement and the likelihood of staying in school. Some pull-in factors are things like positive school climate, caring relationships with adults, participation in co-curricular activities, a sense of belonging at the school, asset-based mindset around our students' ability to learn, and a match between student and learning environment. And some push-in factors include family involvement in school, academic and motivational support for learning, high educational aspirations, and supervision and monitoring. So now I'd like to share with you some of the strategies, the universal strategies that are happening across the district. And I'm going to start with some district-wide universal strategies first. At the district level, we have implemented protective factors, providing many supports and programs district-wide in an effort to help prevent the pushout or pullout effects. One in particular, which I'm going to start at the bottom, is we have a dedicated team at the district level that includes school and district personnel to analyze and evaluate district-wide systemic factors within our sphere of control that contribute to the pushout and pullout effects. But we also are involved with reimagining, the reimagining of the Welcome Center and how families and students first experience the Lynn Public Schools, the district-wide PD on L strategies, and the Hope and Healing Equity work, the building of clinical teams in all our schools, the wellness teams in all our schools, the adoption of the SEL curriculum and the SEL lens district-wide. PBIS is in many of our schools, UDL are in many of our schools, progressive and restorative discipline, the four-side dental, I could go on, I could read every bullet, but I don't feel like I need to, but there is a lot that we're doing district-wide. At the elementary school level, we work hard to create that sense of belonging right from day one of their school experiences. This is a list of some of the system's supports and programs that we currently have implemented in our elementary schools. And I'm not going to read every bullet, but I'll highlight some, the Caring School curriculum that everyone is using, the Spring Board Family Huddles where we're really connecting the families in the intervention work, the after-school and summer work, the family outreach that's happening across all of our elementary schools, the social worker lunch bunch in small groups that are happening, they're working on building social skills and coping skills. The social workers are also doing family workshops using the family-supporting student success curriculum, and the instructional practices that support metacognition and language development for our inclusion in ELD models. At the middle school level, again, we're doing, they're working hard to prevent students from feeling as if they don't belong. So at the middle school level, they're also working very hard to support students' sense of belonging and their efforts around pushout prevention. Some of the work they're doing, the increase of social workers at the secondary level to increase engagement of all students, fifteen were added this school year, school social workers, student groups, and family groups are happening at the middle school level as well, Project YES and Breed All Stars to engage our most at-risk middle schoolers, the LEAP program, after-school program at Marshall Middle School, the implementation of instructional practices that support our most underserved students, the restructuring of the ESL and ELD model to support our Ls, and the reimagining schools' work where the schools have teams that have been created at the school level to develop and distribute surveys to students, parents, and staff. The teams are conducting focus groups with students and staff to collect data and feedback on what's not working for them and how we can better support them, and they're coming up with strategic changes at the school level. And at the high school level, they are working very hard to stay connected through building relationships, and there are many efforts at the high school level where they are building relationships with their students and to prevent them from being pushed out, their advisory block, mentoring rooms, the increased communication with school messenger, student voice opportunities, clubs and sports, welcome team and guidance aids, community peer models, peer mediation, living in two worlds, home visits, there's a lot that's going on to build the relationships with the students. They are also, the next slide, Pat, they're also staying connected through mental health support, and there are many different ways that we are doing that. They have Attendance Tuesday wraparound meetings at Lynn Classical. Lynn English has a similar program, but they call it individual student problem-solving teams that meet weekly to talk through students who need to be reached and families that need outreach. And then at FECTO, there's home visits that they're doing to keep kids engaged and be in school. The Lynn Community Teen Health Centers, our Lynn Community Health Partnership is a huge connection across the district. They are great partners for us in helping to keep engaged with our students. The Bright Program, which combines clinical support like counseling, crisis intervention, psychoed referrals, it provides academic support, partnerships with teachers to develop an academic plan, they help students manage schoolwork and provide basic tutoring, there's family support with frequent communication with families, crisis support for families, education and leadership development, and then there's care coordination with transition planning, coordination and communications with school staff and community providers. Providing these four services is an integrated, individualized, and sustained approach over time and is the key to make a difference for our students and families. We also have the Youth Harbors Program, which serves homeless, unaccompanied high school students who statistically are more likely than their housed peers to drop out of school. And so they, Youth Harbors helps by providing housing. Their staff works to find the student-stable long-term housing once immediate shelter needs are met. Then they individualize life skill workshops, they provide workshops that are individually tailored to each student, they vary widely and can include workshops that are career-oriented by finding jobs, writing a resume, or improving interview skills, domestic workshops on cooking, cooking food safety, maintaining an apartment, doing laundry, managing and negotiating roommate relationships. They also do workshops on academic pieces, planning educational goals, connecting with academic tutors, and financial pieces, managing a budget, paying bills on time, learning to save for the future. So not only are they helping them with housing and social-emotional support, but they're also teaching them how to be self-sustaining. The program is flexible to meet with the unique needs of each homeless youth, and the clients generally stay in the program for a total of six to twelve months, after which they are eligible for the Rediscoveries Alumni Services. So even after they are finished with that period of time with Youth Harbor, they can still participate in the alumni services. And then the high schools are also connected through academic opportunities. We have a great deal of advanced placement courses, the implementation of instructional practices to support our underserved students, the restructuring of the ESL/ELD model, the early college partnerships with Salem State and North Shore, the After Dark Program, the English learner support, the Edge Annuity Credit Recovery, the SEAL of Bili literacy, the Hundred Mails to College, and there are many others, other programs that are academic opportunities for our students. And then they stay connected through elevating student voice and community service. And these are examples of ways that they're doing that. We have Student Government, which actually just happened, didn't it? Student Government Day? Yeah. The Civics Action Research Projects, the Inclusivity Panels, if you have not had an opportunity to attend one, I know that Ms. DePena was at one recently, they are amazing things to witness, so I encourage you to do it if you could. The Volunteer Service Club credit, the Social Justice Club, the Partnership with Mothers for Justice in Equity, the Haven Project, there's lots and lots of opportunities for elevating student voice and community service. And then finally, they're staying connected on the horizon is the way we wanted to word it, it's the continued work that we will be doing. The reimagining schools partnership will continue over the next two, three years. That is a connection with the Department of Education and is, they're working with us as a partner to reimagine what secondary school could be, both at the middle school and high school level, around flexible scheduling, sliding days, courses that are more engaging and interesting for kids, and getting the students' feedback on what they would like to see at the school. So the schools are currently working on collecting that data now. The Northeast Arc Partnership, the Mass Grad work, right now, all of the secondary schools have Mass Grad funds that come from the Department of Ed, and now we have paired up the middle schools with the high schools to do some bridge work between the two schools. And then additional early college opportunities and continued efforts for flexible scheduling and the acceleration work that we're currently doing as a district with the schools on the framework of support. And that is it. If you have any questions.
Member Magnolia.
Thank you very much. I have probably a million questions, but I'm just going to ask one of them. We voted here to change the attendance policy for the 2021-2022 academic year. Can you talk a little bit about that specific policy with regards to how it lowers grades? Since it would seem to me to be more of a stick than a carrot if you're trying to do all these things to keep kids in school. I am imagining that if what you're talking about are seniors, they have maybe a little bit more flexibility with decisions about whether they're going to school or not than, say, freshmen are, that's probably still within the realm of the family making decisions about whether they're going to school or not. And so, you know, too many absences leading to a D and a subject they were getting a B in, I could imagine would push students out of school. That's my stick rather than carrot. So can you just talk about how you understand the attendance policy and its direct translation into grades as affecting any of this?
So you're right, it can be a stick. Built into the policy, though, we did build in that they could earn back, if their attendance was better the next quarter, they could earn back what their grade would have been in first quarter. But, you know, I mean, attendance is a big piece. If they're not in school, they're not going to learn, so we need to get them into school. But at the same time, if they're not in school and it impacts their grades, it's a catch-22, right? So you try to entice them, encourage them, give them opportunities to earn it back, but there also needs to be the set expectations of that you got to go to school. I mean, if we're teaching them to be college and career-ready, in college, you have to be in class, in work, you have to go to work. So it's this learning, this life learning that you're trying to implement through that policy to some extent.
I would just add, now, I'm going to try to access my memory here around what the policy was before that change.
Right.
And I think we actually moved to a policy that more clearly communicates an expectation around attending. I think it used to be seven unexcused absences, right? And let's be clear, you know, illness, appointments, you know, funeral, things like that, all excused, just the things that, you know, a student doesn't show or they're not present, they take a vacation, those sorts of things would be unexcused. It used to be seven that we allowed them, and then I think if you exceeded that, you failed, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. It went to an automatic.
So we shifted that to like, let's make the communication clear, the expectation clear around the importance of attending, but we do understand that life circumstances happen. If by chance you exceeded that, I think it's four unexcused absences, and you were passing the class, the highest you would get is a D, but you have the opportunity to earn that back so long as you meet the expectation in the next quarter. And so, you know, I don't know that we've had a full in-person year to live this yet.
No, nonsense.
I'm not sure quite yet that we can say definitively what the impact is, but certainly, I mean, your point is well-taken around, you know, being sensitive to the kinds of things that, you know, result in students not attending that aren't excused, that might end up with a student, you know, digging the hole so deep that they just decide to do something else. So your point is well-taken.
I think it might be interesting as a data point, especially because we've had a year in person, we didn't have to go remote here, to try to look at the students who do drop out and how much they were affected by the policy, so it's not going to be for this year, right? It's going to be for next year, to see if there's causing this year, right, it's going to be for next year, to see if there's causation, correlation, what the statistical relationship between those two are, because there might need to be an incentive program that's separate that would allow for an online class. And, and here's what I'm imagining here, right? I see at the elementary school, when I pick up and drop off my daughter, older kids who are basically walking their very young kids here. Now, it's one thing if the high school and the elementary school are right next to each other, it's another thing if that requirement, that has nothing to do with the student's academic potential, but it's a family expectation. I can imagine these students dropping off their younger siblings and always arriving late as a result, right? And so I'm trying to think about these systemic issues and how the school can be a partner in helping the student both meet their familial needs, but also meet their academic needs in a way that can sort of see how this data is painting a picture of a very particular kind of student that might need a unique program to help them.
I will say, Dr. McNolia, that, like, so the Attendance Tuesdays at Classical or the program at Lynn English, that's part of the work that they do. They, when they're meeting on students and they see a student's attendance is, is starting to fall, or it's really starting to impact them, that's the digging they're going into. They're, they're meeting with the student, they're talking to the parent, and if it is found that it's a situation like that, they're making adjustments in their own schoolwork to help assist that student, so that the student isn't being penalized for just being a good family member.
Thank you.
Ms. Dugan.
So first of all, thank you, this is obviously representative of a lot of work, and I appreciate everything you did. On the district universal strategy, just a few questions and a couple of comments. You mentioned PBIS and UDL, which are, I guess they're gaining a little traction, or getting a little bit older now, too, but you mentioned they're only in some of the schools. Would that, is that a level, is that middle, I mean, could you explain that a little bit?
It's across all levels.
Okay.
And the goal is to have them in all schools, it's, it's, you know, there's a cost to it.
Absolutely.
There's time that's involved with it, so each year, and then when the pandemic hit, there was a delay in it. Every summer we were doing that.
Delay the trajectory of full participation, the goal is all schools.
Yeah.
Right, right, thank you. And then you mentioned the social workers running family workshops, is that a targeted thing, or is that just open to?
It's just open to any parent that wants to come. They typically do it once a month on a certain day, in their library or in a special room. There's a different topic each month that they are meeting. Some have up to 20 parents that show up, some have just a few, but it is open to anyone who wants to join.
Has the attendance been strong with that, or?
I think it averages.
It varies.
It varies, yeah.
It varies.
Yeah, you couldn't really.
And it's called different things, you know, if you go up to the Ford School, it's the second cup of coffee. So it's, it's, it's called different things in different schools.
Great, thank you, and thank you for all your hard work, thank you.
Ms. Capola.
One of them is the Special Education Family Night. Is that a one night, just a year, or is that multiple nights, or?
So they do, I know Classical does it, I don't know if, it's once, once a month?
Once a year.
It's, and it's typically geared towards specific topics that they're trying to educate parents on in regards to their student and how to support their student, but they do it once a year.
Okay.
I mean, there's ongoing special education meetings at the schools, this is just one that's for any special ed parent who wants to come to learn about, you know, whatever they're sharing that year.
Right, but it's not an individual meeting?
No.
It's a, a full meeting?
It's no different than like doing a parent open house?
Right.
And having like a guest speaker or having a topic that you're sharing with them, but they're, they're offering it to selected groups.
Okay, is that any reason why it's not in the others? The other?
Um, I don't know, I, I, I don't know for sure whether it's not in the others, I would have to investigate and find out from the others. I know that Marshall does something for theirs, I'm sure Breed does. I would, I'd want to give you accurate information, I can find out from all of them who does it and who doesn't.
Okay. Is that a night that's an option for special ed parents that are like in the middle school to come up and observe?
At the high.
At the high school?
I'm sure it's open, they would be open to anyone.
Okay. The other thing is, you know, I work with adolescents and teens that have babies, and there's just no daycare out there for them. And transportation is a real struggle. You know, when the Classical architect papers were put together, it was, it was to include a room there for daycare, and that never happened, it was used for something else, you know? But I think it's time that we have to really look at that, you know, even if it's not on our premises, Lynn Tech has the cubby den, and it was always said when they put the cubby den in, this is not for students' children, you know, but who needed it more? You know, if a, if a teen was in the high school and had a child that was three or older, you know, it just seems like that was the place that could really have supported them. But I think it's time for us to really look and, and really try to help them, you know? Because it's a real struggle for them, and I've had this year alone, you know, a waitlist that I haven't been able to accommodate. And not only that, we don't supply transportation right now, you know, because of the COVID rules and the transportation, and it's a, they, some of them, when I offer them a slot, they can't get their child there. You know, we're way over on the swampscat line, not in a central spot at all, because we couldn't find any place to place that daycare center that would be central and helpful. So it's, it's a real problem, and I know what you mean about dropout, but these, the girls that are on my list, you know, they became dropouts.
Right, and they didn't want to be.
They did not want to be dropouts. You know, some have struggled and done, you know, transferred to the night school, you know, which was helpful, but I think it's our, our, you know, if you have to resolve something, I think it's our issue to help and resolve them, because their families aren't able to help, they're all working. You know, so it's, it's, this is not, you know, 20, 30 years ago when people were home and somebody else could mine that baby, it's just not happening. So I think it's our turn to step up.
Thank you, Donna.
Toward that end, I mean, I think I would agree with you that we need to, you know, eliminate all barriers to supporting students being able to remain engaged in school, and one quick thought is, I mean, there are a lot of, a number of partners in the city with whom we work closely, whose facilities are empty during the day, and could potentially, if it was staffed appropriately, be a site for that very thing. So we will take a look at that.
Yeah, good. But transportation is a real issue. I'll be honest with you, when the girl, you know, even when, if they have a daycare site, for them to be able to transfer their baby to the daycare spot and then to get to school on time is a struggle.
Yep, understood.
Sorry.
Ms. Castellanos.
Thank you so much for the presentation, it's always thorough. I, I definitely appreciate the partnerships that we have, you know, put up, put forth. It's definitely been very strategic and sustainable in the way we're utilizing our forward-thinking. I think five years ago I said it, we, we lacked, and I could see that in the, in the district-wide strategic plan that we did a few years ago. I see it, again, this is another example of bringing it to fruition. I definitely, you know, I look at the 3.1%, you know, when we talk about record low, it's during a period of crisis also, and there was definitely policy that was impacting that. We will, I, I would, I would, I take it the policies that we're going to look forward-wise, we're going to adapt with what we have for the push-out effects, because we can put everyone in place that we work with, but the, the matter is, is how we actually deliver. I think delivery is very important, and that outreach effort needs to be robust as always. There's so many different things going on, this is our first year back, and it's, it's a transition year, so be, I think it's being mindful of who we're partnering up with, and make, and ensure that we, we also present the fruit of what, what is going on. I see a lot of great programs like Leap for Education's Dream Mall program at Marshall Middle School, I see All-Stars, All-Stars at Breed, I could keep going, I could shout us all day, and a lot of these programs are impacting the school-to-person pipeline. You know, I think that's something that, that's, those are short comments. My questions really are going towards the chronic absenteeism, because we have a real issue here. There's really a lot going on with attendance. I got to meet with our attendance supervisors recently at a Systems of Care meeting, where I got to hear from a lot of what's happening on the ground level and the struggles, and it's very scary. And, and we could put all the, you know, our, our, our strategies, these are all paper, but what are we, what are we doing for next year, what are we doing for the summer in terms of just what we plan to do to reduce that? And I know we, that's a whole presentation, there's a lot here, just to give, for all fairness for everybody, this is a lot. I would love to have had more data broken down in some of these programs, and I understand it's, we're talking about dropout rates, is it a large, we could spend weeks, months talking about this, but my focus really is attendance, and how do we, could we just elaborate a little bit more from me in there?
Well, I mean, we continue to do the wellness meetings, like, those are happening all the time. Kim, I know you were just recently at one.
Yeah, and I think that what, what they're talking about in wellness meetings, I'm sorry.
I think what they're talking about in wellness meetings and what they're talking about in the group that you were in is, I mean, in response to the pandemic, schools are experiencing students who are in crisis, multiple students who are in crisis, and the SEL and mental health needs across the district are profound. You know, and I think what you, in terms of a response to that, is what you're going to see in the building of the social work staff across the district that Dr. Tottwiler has committed to in the SOA plan. I mean, that framework for next year, if approved in the budget, will put 74 social workers across this district. At a school like Lynn English, you will have eight social workers and a clinical supervisor under that model. I mean, that's, that's enormous. I think, you know, in terms of the response, Brian, I really think it sits in the level of supports that we're going to put in school, you know, with, with social work staff.
Well, that's, that's where, I, I just wish I had more data to.
Yeah, and in terms of even the attendance team, one of the pieces that they asked for in the budget was a social worker to be directly working in that office worth, with them, particularly focused on our most at-risk students at the high school level who are at risk of dropping out. It's our undocumented minors, who, it's our homeless population at that level who are so at risk. So putting another service in there as well. I mean, Deb highlighted the Youth Harbors Program, that really is an incredible program that we brought in a couple of years ago under the title, under our Title I, that services students who are homeless, but it looks to address their most basic needs of food, shelter, and clothing, knowing that if we don't address those needs for them, they won't be able to come to school, they won't be able to access. So I mean, it's programs like that that are, that are going to address these issues.
I appreciate that, and I just wanted to just follow up, just with the population that does drop out. I didn't really see much, I don't know what we're doing for that population, so when that, when we have 16-year-olds that we, we don't reach, and they do drop out, you know, I've been working in this, this business for a long time, and I get to meet a lot of different organizations, like Youth Build out of North Shore, CDC, that have vocational opportunities and high-stip programs, and I understand that we don't, necessarily that's not going to be the primary focus, but we need to have an option for those group of kids. I, I just feel like, I, I, I see so mu, so many of these kids, and, and like, you're looking at some very, when you look at push-out and pull-in, those effects, sometimes the traditional school setting is not, and we, we try and try and try, and then it hit the age, and then, and then they turn 18 years old, and then we're left with a product where I don't say, you know, we're going to end up in the school.
So that is what the reimagining schoolwork is all about with the Department of Ed, it's about looking at what courses are we offering that is, that is going to pique a student's interest, rather than the, just the straight ELA class or English class or the straight history class. We're looking to pilot some ELA courses, that one is Latin American Literature, and we've got almost 200 kids who are interested in that course. So that's part of it. The other part of it is about the schedule and other opportunities, that's where After Dark came into play, that's where like the sliding day of, you know, kids being able to do internships or the schedule that allows blocks of time where kids can go out and do other things. And so we are looking at that. We've talked about, I know Amy Dunn and Dr. Braga both have asked Pat and I about, you know, can we do a school-within-a-school kind of model where some of our kids who, who do need to work in order for their families to survive, could they do a different schedule? But that takes time of development and, you know, researching and making sure that we're meeting the Department of Ed requirements, but that is what the reimagining schoolwork is all about.
Thank you. Ms. Gailey, Ms. Topania.
I didn't have anything to say, and now all of a sudden I'm thinking of this reimagining school ed, and I love the idea. Thank you for the presentation, a lot of it was what we had, many, many, you know, like, as we developed it through the years, it's on here, so, but I really, that reimagining school ed, I think that would really help a lot of our students that could be immigrants that are coming into our city, that, that work during a certain season, you know, they leave, they have to get up in the morning, go do landscaping or whatever, and then, you know, provide money for their families and food. I, I like that reimagining, and I'd like to hear more about it, but not now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that question, Brian. Ms. Castellanos.
Ms. Topania.
Thank you for the presentation, I really appreciate it, and I'm really glad to see that the student, you know, dropout rate is, is reduced significantly, you know, and I, I think that has to do with our wellness teams and, you know, the outreach programs, which I really, really support, you know, and I like the, the community health-based centers, especially with the social and emotional health, you know, that's really key, you know, I benefited from it, being a single dad at a point. And I like the reimagining program, especially for our ELS, you know, like, like Dawn Lorraine just mentioned, there's, there's other different circumstances with kids and stuff, you know, so we really need to look into that, and I really appreciate this, thank you for the data, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for the, for the presentation, I think, you know, there's really, there's great news here, and there's an overall trend of the, of the graduation rate, of the dropout rate, plenty of work to do, particularly around the, the ELS, which we're, which we're doing, and, and still positive trend, so I think that's terrific. And, you know, I think, as my colleagues have said, that the menu of options we have is really impressive, and I know a lot of work and thought has gone into, to building that out, and, and the ideas that we have put forward. I mean, I really like the push-out, pull-out framing, and I think particularly the pull-out angle or perspective really is a great reminder of how education is so interconnected with the other issues that we're facing in, in the city of Lynn around, around housing and homelessness and the availability of, of childcare and, and, you know, people trying to find ways to make ends meet. And I think, you know, I really appreciate the, this team's willingness to see those issues and, and build the partnerships it takes to, to, I'd work on those cross-sectional issues. One, one question I had, on, you know, now that we have this really extensive menu of, of programs, I think at an individual level, a lot of that selection is obviously done by the, the student and their, the people they're close with, and then the wellness teams is, I think, a key part of that. Is there, is there a way, are we able to look at, at a, at a district level, like, the capacity of each of the programs and sort of, you know, which, if there's a certain number of students that aren't being matched to any of the menu items, and, and that, that sort of like systemic view of this?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a good question, I mean, I can't tell you, if you're asking about capacity, I, I guess I would say that I've not heard, you know, concern expressed around, you know, we've got. you know, concern expressed around, you know, we've got this program, this program, this program, and they are oversubscribed or worse yet, there's no one in them, you know what I mean? But that's something that I think we could, you know, research more deeply and bring back and share. And I think there's important information in that data, right? You know, especially thinking about which students were not reaching, what programs seem to be attracting what profile of student. So it's a good question.
Yeah, thank you. And I know that's a huge lift, it will take time to put together and so on and so forth. But I think, you know, it might be helpful for some of my colleagues' questions about, you know, getting that kind of data about what's working, but exactly that, I mean, who are we missing? And also over time, that data would help presumably the wellness teams make the right recommendation because then they've seen what worked in other circumstances. So, I mean, this is, I think, obviously, this has been a priority for the district for many years and it's really nice to see how some of the other different issues that we talked about around social, emotional learning and the high school curriculum and, you know, attendance kind of coming together and starting to bear fruit and teeing up a course of action that feels very promising for the students that own public schools. So thank you. Yeah, member Castellanos.
Something just came to my mind. So definitely powers, as we put more social workers and we put more investments in SEL, it's like the initiative that we initially set out to accomplish, where again, we actually made so much progress where we need to start to have that, like that strategic plan within the strategic plan within what we plan to do. Because that's going to be very important work.
I mean, when you think about it, next year we reach our goal. It's quite amazing, I think, to have that level. I mean, I wouldn't, I'd be surprised if we're not one of the top school districts in Massachusetts in terms of clinical support in our schools.
I agree, actually. I've been saying it since day one, we have like a couple of social workers. So I have a screen in the top of my lungs anytime I get to go out in the Commonwealth. So I'm very grateful for what you all have done. It's life-changing, it's impacting the trauma to, you know, the trauma to wellness pipeline. And I deal with it every day, so it's just very important to see. It's still in its early stages and I'm very grateful.
It is. It's in its infancy in terms of, but in terms of the workforce that we hope to build, we're going to see the fruits of that next year. And for high schools to have that level, that number of clinical staff on site, with a clinical supervisor on site.
It's a game changer.
It's a game changer.
Absolutely.
Can you put that in the paper?
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everyone. So the next item on the agenda is a request to accept a donation of $750 from the Solomini Charitable Corporation for Fallon Elementary School to purchase a basketball hoop for the playground. It's a recommendation of the.
Recommendation would be to support this wonderful donation.
Make a motion then that we accept the donation of $750 from the Solomini Charitable Corporation for the Fallon Elementary School to purchase a basketball hoop for the playground and that we send a thank you note to Mr. Dave Solomini Sr. and his Solomini Charitable Corporation.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Vote to continue nonparticipation in school choice for school year 2022-2023.
The recommendation would be an enthusiastic, please do not engage in participation in school choice. The recommendation would be to continue nonparticipation. This is a school committee responsibility each year to declare whether or not it'll participate in school choice. And so once again, I'd be recommending that we not.
Seeing that we have no room, I'll make a motion.
No, that didn't sound right, that we not participate in school choice.
He weren't, the way he weren't, yeah, the way he weren't.
And I make a motion that we vote to continue nonparticipation in school choice for school year 2022 to 2023. Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is the last day of school for the 21-22 school year.
Yeah, also in the school committee's purview is to approve the last day of the school year, which is June 22nd. We had two snow days this year. The school year was originally set to end on June 17th. June 20th is Juneteenth, so two days thereafter would be the 22nd, which would be a half-day. Looking for your support to approve that as the last day of school.
Make a motion that we vote for the last day of school for the 2021-2022 school year be June 22nd, 2022, and it'd be a half a day.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
22-23 calendar.
Yeah, so in your packets, there is a draft calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. I want to start by saying that the school calendar actually sits in the Lynn Teachers Union contract. There would need to be a ratification by the Lynn Teachers Union, which I believe is set for the 14th, which is next week. So what I would be seeking is your approval pending ratification from the Lynn Teachers Union. What you have here is a school calendar that is pretty similar to the one that we experienced this year with a couple of changes that I want to point out. First, the number of full in-service days for teachers. We are proposing five for the upcoming school year. Three would start before the first day of school, that last full week in August, shaded in gray. There would be one that would be the one we typically or historically have on Election Day in November. And then we added an additional one shortly after New Year's Day, just to allow staff the opportunity to dive deep on one of the significant initiatives that we'll be engaging next year, whether it's the new curriculum at the elementary level or some school-based initiative. Want to make sure that we have the elbow room to get that done and for staff to learn with one another. The other thing that I want to point out is the first day of school. You will notice that it is on the 7th of September. This year, we started the day after Labor Day. There was a primary election on that day this year, which caused some issues. There is a primary next year on that date, and so we would like to avoid that and leave schools open for that important civic activity to happen. And then we'll kick off the school year on the 7th. Last, you will notice, I mean, we kept the same contractual or upheld the same contractual agreement we have with the L T U. There are nine half-days shaded in yellow. I'm going to talk about December 23rd in just a second, but that's another piece of our opportunity to engage in professional learning with staff. I lost my train of thought, the half-days. Oh, this year we did an early release every Wednesday at the elementary level of one hour. Very important from the standpoint of staff development, but there was hardship on families. In this calendar, we're proposing to restore that hour at the elementary level. And we've got a plan that's in the process of being discussed in negotiations to account for that professional learning time. So that is a shift that is in this calendar. We spent, I would say, several weeks putting this together and trying to sweat the details to make sure that it is student-friendly first and foremost, family-friendly, but also allows us the opportunity to provide the kinds of professional learning that needs to happen over next year. We think that it does that. I did propose that the 23rd be a half-day. It has not, to my knowledge, in this district, at least not since I've been here. You know, this is a day that typically attendance is very, very low. And we thought it prudent to shorten the day, give an opportunity for students to come in and engage in something that is fun and engaging, enriching before they leave for the vacation. And we'll send them all home a little bit early on that day, staff as well. Questions I can answer. Again, I would be seeking a motion to approve pending ratification by the L T U.
Make a motion to approve for the school year 22-23 calendar pending ratification of the Lynn Teachers Union.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Great. Next item on the agenda is Human Resources Generalist Recruitment Specialist. This was on the agenda last week under the Personnel Subcommittee. Their report was to table. I felt like this was something that was of general interest to the entire school committee that we had engaged in, so we wanted to take it up. And I think Dr. Tottweiler had some follow-up that he was going to.
Yeah, in your packets, there are a couple of things that I will talk you through. One thing that's not, that I referenced last time that I want to start with. In October of 2019, I presented to the school committee a strategy for increasing the racially, racial and linguistic diversity of our staff. And in that presentation and in this document, which is more like a report than a, you know, like a PowerPoint, there are multiple references to a proposal of a recruitment position for human resources as part of that strategy. Because even then, HR did not have the capacity to engage in all the activities that we believe would be important to enhance that work. So I just wanted to name that before we start. And it was also formally part of my 2019-2020 goals. Of course, the pandemic drove us in other directions, but I'm back now seeking your support and approval for this position. What is in your packet upon request is an updated posting with, as was requested, some additional detail around the role and responsibility and some of the expectations that this HR Generalist Recruitment Specialist would play. They are highlighted. That includes, but is not limited to, an expectation around work on the weekends or on evenings and some travel related to the recruitment responsibilities. And then, as was requested, to sort of just spell out in more detail some of the responsibilities that this person would be responsible for. The other thing that I put in your pocket, packet, not pocket, is just a little bit of comparison. I mentioned in the last meeting that this position's being proposed because there's not the capacity to do this work and other responsibilities in the HR office. And so just for comparison purposes, I put two comparable districts. There are HR org charts in your packet. These are the HR org charts for New Bedford and Brockton Public Schools. Both school districts are smaller than the Lynn Public Schools with respect to student enrollment and staff. Both have more staff in their HR department than we do currently, including individuals whose specific role it is to engage in some of these recruitment responsibilities. For Brockton, they've got four associate directors. One of them has that responsibility. It's not named there, but that is what they convey to us. And so they've got 11 staff in their HR department. New Bedford, which is notably smaller than we are, has 10. We currently have eight, but would be seeking a ninth person to really help us, help with the capacity to do what we believe can be done much better, in much more robust fashion. With that, I'll invite Carrie Fabbali, the Executive Director of HR, to that table, which feels very far away this evening compared to previous evenings. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Magnolia.
Thank you for these org charts. So I have, I feel like it's a foolish question, but the title of steno clerk seems quite antiquated. And so I am wondering if those folks have specific responsibilities that go beyond, in my imagination, what a steno clerk in 1956 was likely doing. So could you just tell me a little bit more about that?
I may be able to help. I'm going to guess that it's an outdated civil service classification from 100 years ago. That, that's the reference. When those positions, you had to take, they were tests. Those positions you tested for, they were lists. Those have all been abolished, but that's probably the reference.
I guess I'm wondering what they actually do, since I'm imagining that, you know, they're not Girl Fridays walking around in sweater sets and taking dictation, which is what in my mind a steno clerk does. Just trying to bring a little levity to the fact that I just read the phrase "steno clerk" and I don't think I've seen that except in a Nancy Drew novel for years.
So it's not 100 years old. I do have a book in my office dated 1974. And the joke is, who's older than this book in my office? Because I do have a mix of clerks, steno clerks, principal, computer operator. It does provide levity when we open it. I believe you have seen it and made a comment about it. Close to 100 years, though, I do feel that way. They do have duties. They're very task-oriented because of the civil service laws. So what we're looking to bring is support in traveling. I, because they're in that union, I wouldn't be able to have, we would have to pay overtime instead of having a salary person who can take that time and be with me or go out to Salem State without me and do the recruiting. So yes, we can have a good mom talk about the steno clerk. We have made it so that all the steno clerks, they have equal responsibilities, but they are tasks and we do share all of those tasks. And then there are some, so if you have the org chart of what we have, none of the steno clerks, principal clerks, office assistant, none of those are supervisory roles. So I would have an assistant in the office when I, another joke in the office is how often I go to meetings, would have some backup in that manner, so decision-making as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, member Dugan.
Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it. I guess I do have a few concerns about the position. I think the first one would be, it seems like traveling maybe is the biggest part of it. So I guess my question is, have we thought creatively about how? And I'm not saying that we don't do things like this because obviously we do, but just who does the traveling? Possibly, maybe, again, just thinking outside the box, maybe have principals travel? Maybe, you said the clerks would need to be paid overtime. I guess I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, why create a new position when it's really just traveling that it seems to be, you know, like to the Merck Conference or to Salem State or whatever, you know? I guess that's my concern and I guess that's my question, too.
Well, thank you for having me. But I would say that it's not just the traveling. There is a lot of, so I think it was two weeks ago that you discussed the exit. There is a lot of, so I think it was two weeks ago that you discussed the exit survey. That's a lot of data that has to come back. And that would also be a responsibility of someone in recruitment, to look at what our trends are, to analyze some data. So, to assist in that, I would be directing those tasks. I don't have a staff member in the office right now. There are, it's not just the traveling. There's Handshake, which is an online forum that I literally do not have enough hours in the day to get to, to make sure that we're up to date. There are contacts in, we are a member of Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. There are a lot of meetings for that. We are a member of, we're working with DESI. And we do go to those things. And I am inviting principals, absolutely, because we want to have onsite interviews, but we all, I also needed someone else to screen, to have that skill to screen resumes. Between the time that we left work today, I did not go home and I stayed here, and I had an opportunity to scroll through. And we are going to have very many openings this year in support of special education, going through budget, in support of the E L D Department. We're going to be hiring those phenomenal social workers that we just had a conversation about. I can't do it all. There are not enough hours in the day. And the principals also need to continue to have that support. So there would essentially be two people that they could ask for support. And I do think at this point, the size of our district really, really necessitates someone else to look at those resumes as they come in. So, the social worker piece, I think, I think it's just the two of them looking at that at that point and doing that screening. We need to get, we need to be able to support the principals and the directors in those areas as well.
Thank you.
Member Gaitley?
When you are hired, we hired you at a salary that when, when the interview occurred, you would be doing those things, that they would already be done, that would be in your purview. So, I don't know, like, I don't understand why it is that when you're hired, you say you can do these things, but now you can't. And the other thing is, I don't like that it has to be someone that has a bachelor's degree, because I know a lot of the girls in your office are very, very bright, and they could be easily trained in this. So, I, I'm confused at why we have to have this person right now. And I think we should wait on it.
Can I speak to that?
If this is the job that you agreed to when you were hired, then I think you should be doing the job.
So I can actually respond to that. This is not, this is not Ms. Fabbali's assessment of capacity. This is my assessment of capacity, which, quite frankly, I've had seven years to assess that capacity. And there are things that, so many things that we should, could and should be doing that we've never had the, never, meaning the seven years I've been here, probably longer, the capacity to do. We are a bigger district now than we were seven years ago, both in terms of the student enrollment and staff. Last year, we added over 200 positions, 200. Now, probably too early to start naming how many positions will be added, but it will probably be a good number. One person does not, I believe, separate and apart from Ms. Fabbali, I believe that that department does not have the capacity to do the kinds of activities that I would like to see done in order to put us in the best position to bring the best and the brightest here for our students and our families. So I just want to be clear about that. Ms. Fabbali could promise the world, she's one person. And I, we co-created that job description. I remember it quite vividly. And yes, those are, the activities that you just sort of laid out are in her purview. But I'm telling you, those, in addition to all of the day-to-day tasks, one person is not able to do all of that. And I think if you look at other districts' H R org charts, other districts have also decided that one person at the, you know, whether it's their executive director or whatever the title is, is not able to do all of the myriad of tasks and, you know, to get on the balcony and see, you know, do the analysis, understand the vision and what the next best steps would be. So I just want to be clear that this is, this is coming from me, and it came to you from me two years, three years ago in our plan around increasing our racial and diversity, linguistic diversity in our staff. We just don't have the capacity to do that. So delaying it, I'm not sure what benefit there would be. I can tell you very clearly what the detriment, what the harm would be. And that comes really in the, in the form of a significant slowdown in response time when current staff need things. If we're trying to recruit and be, you know, off-site in different places and making these relationships, it will result in not having as many relationships or substantive relationships as I would like for us to have. I could go on, but I see way more benefits than drawbacks to this position. It's something that we proposed years ago. It's something that I'm assessing as a need, not, not her.
You bring in these other districts, and you bring in all these jobs. There are no descriptions of what these people are doing in these jobs. So it's like, it's like comparing nothing to me. This is the issue. I just don't like the idea that there are people in that office that could do this job if they were trained by Carrie.
So respectfully, respectfully, we can't make them do that. That would need to be impact bargain with that unit. I mean, these are things that are outside the purview of people who are in those positions, number one. Number two, I think it's important to acknowledge and respect the fact that human resources is a field. People go to school and learn and train over the course of years. People get master's degrees in this area. It's not a function of just showing somebody how to do it. This is a field of study. And we want to respect that by bringing in somebody who can hit the ground running, provide us the supports that we've been missing now for at least seven years. And that's not to say that the people who are in H R aren't talented. They are, and they're hardworking. I'm saying that, you know, and I know you said it was nothing, but we're understaffed. You know, when we look at the number of staff in the Lynn Public Schools, the number of students, and we look at other districts and what they have in terms of their H R departments, we're smaller than they are, which means certain things won't get done with the degree of efficiency and substance as I would like for them to be in support of our staff and going out and getting the best and the brightest for, for our district.
Other questions from the committee? Yeah, Member Castellanos?
Thank you so much for coming tonight and everyone just having, just a conversation around, obviously, where people are at with this position. It seems to me, I'm pretty torn on it, you know? I did, I do appreciate the update to the language. I did ask for that. I appreciate that. And I do see the concern of the delay, you know? And when we say, you know, you assessed capacity the last seven years as you were here, I could imagine, you know, we're looking to increase. Are we also moving, for me, my question is, are we in need of a restructuring here? Is that, I feel like when we look at all of this, and I know we get out of position, right? We're out of position, but are we looking at actually a restructuring of our model that we work with now?
I think that that would be a better conversation to have in the space of negotiations.
No, I agree. Okay, and that, that's something that I feel, okay. Before I go into my next question, I appreciate that. You know, I'm gonna hold off on my question.
Member Magnolia?
I'd like to move that we accept the position of, hold on. Where's my? Human Resources Generalist Recruitment Specialist.
Any second? Seeing none. Dr. Talwala?
Yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, you, the school committee hired me to bring forth what I think needs to be done to move the district forward. It is your, in your purview, and you have the authority to accept or not things that I bring forward. But what I would say in not accepting what I bring forward is that I would also be very thoughtful about your expectations when you're not accepting what I think I need to move the district forward. That's all.
Just for procedurally, attorney Green Span, what, for a motion that receives no second on the floor?
No need to, there's no vote.
Right.
It dies.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. And is that, can that motion be resubmitted? Is there, how does that work for Roberts rules in terms of reconsideration?
It would, I don't know if you have any local rules on reconsideration, but I'd have to review the Roberts rules, yeah, on reconsideration.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good, sounds good. Anyone else have any procedural question there? Okay.
It is my understanding as the maker of the motion, if I don't, if I got a second that I could, and it voted down, I could move to reconsider. But without a second, I can't do anything. Is that?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the operating protocols check-in.
So in your packet is a memo from me reminding you of a recommendation that I made probably months ago at this point, that we spend some time talking about, not new operating protocols, but the existing ones, and, you know, to put it plainly, how we're doing with them. And so, my recommendation, and I didn't hear any feedback, so I assume folks were okay with it, was to first think about collectively if there was a operating protocol or a norm on which we could do better as a group, that we bring that to the fore. And then, given what we have before us for the remainder of the year, if there was an operating protocol on which we should focus, certainly willing to have that conversation. I'm happy to model it for you if you would like.
Member Capola, yeah?
I was wondering if first, you know, we, we could start with a clean, you know, start, remove the names that are there because they're, they're role names. They're people who aren't on the committee anymore. And you're asking people on the committee to, the new ones who aren't on there yet. So, you know, I don't know how that would be in a form, but, you know, whether it required just a meeting, and we did vote to accept those, do something like that? Maybe just get her on an agenda, you know, have people review it or talk about changes on it? And then, we all sign it? So, because for me, I mean, I'm on there, so I, I don't have a problem, you know? But we're asking people who didn't sign on to it to, you know, honor them in, in, you know, input for that. So I just, that's how I feel. I mean, I didn't really quite think of that before, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a great point. I think we had talked about doing the, the conversation about how we want to, like, amend them or redo them in the summer when we do the retreat, which is why we hadn't done that yet. But I, I could, I think there'd be no issue taking off the bottom there in the meantime. It's like, you know, it, it, it would, these would still be in effect. It's like any kind of policy, which is because it was adopted by the previous committee until it's changed. But I don't think there's any functional role of the actual names. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. We never had one of those before, and we created that, and so, I don't know how. But that's fine, that's fine with me.
Good. So, yeah, I mean, Dr. Talwala, did you, did you want to?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, my team knows that I'm, I'm big on norms, right? I see those, you know, as being important agreements around how, you know, a team plans to work with one another. But, you know, part of the point or the rationale behind doing the check-in actually speaks to what I think we could do collectively. And I know that there are new members, but this is actually the first time that we're having a check-in on it since they were developed, so even with the previous committee. So in that, number two, the, the very last bullet talks about, you know, which reads, "Recognize the importance of honoring the norms and beliefs and agree to take responsibility for respectfully reminding one another when we get off track." That, that's the thing that, you know, I think I need to commit to doing more frequently. I mean, I don't frequently reference the operating protocols. As a, as a group, as a team, we don't talk much about them. I think the thing that collectively we could do better is to make this, you know, and probably when we make new ones over the summer, more of a centerpiece of our work together. I'll keep going and just say that with the, the budget and the planning and all of the stuff that tends to happen that is of great importance over the course of the spring, the thing that I would, you know, I would recommend that we sort of focus on, actually has to do with partnering, it's the bullet right before it actually, "Recognize the importance of working collaboratively with city officials to improve our schools and actively seek a way to enlist their support for our efforts." And I'm thinking specifically about the incredible historic opportunity that we have with the ARPA funding stream and the S R three funding stream. We have this, you know, really unique opportunity. And I think now more than ever, the partnership between school, well, the department, school department and the city should be great. Because I think, to the extent that those lines of communication are wide open and we are working together, the outcomes will be, you know, even better.
Yeah, Member Dugan?
Yeah, I guess I agree with that completely. Going to the wards one and two meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, and just to see how Council Staubard runs a meeting and be able to give input on the ARPA, it got me excited to work with them on things like that. So I think I'd echo that, that, you know, with all that money coming in and with obviously our, you know, our concern for the children in the city, you know, how we can, you know, direct that money in a way that's going to affect our students in a positive way. So I'm looking forward to that as well.
Member Capola?
And I think the council, for all of us, they, they do reach out to us. You know, Counselor Jay Walsh, you know, he is looking into a lot of stuff to fix up the parks, which are really our playfield. So, you know, he's talking about, you know, ideas for behind English and ideas near the tech park. But, you know, he's concerned about the classical piece, you know? Who's, would it go under? You know, who could, because it's really not a park, you know? And it's really, he's questioning whether it was school property, and it got referred to, yeah, Ms. Gaitley, you know, for buildings and grounds. So maybe some of that stuff, like, we hear stuff like that. And, you know, maybe we didn't forward that along as a, as a question or an idea. And, but I think a lot of us hear from the councilors, you know, or people in some of those departments.
Member Gaitley?
I actually did hear from Counselor Walsh, and he wanted to know about the classical half-field and who's responsible for it. And the same thing with the Keeney Park behind Lynn English. And I know that Counselor Hogan is working on getting the McManus Field, I think it's the McManus Field behind Tech, getting, having a tough field, having tough. I think it's the McManus Field behind Tech, getting, having a tough field, having tough, is it?
Turf.
Having, having multipurpose fields, and they've contacted me, as a matter of fact, that is exactly what I was going to work on tomorrow, is I was going to call up, you know, Mr. Donovan to see what my next move is. I'm glad you brought this up, the ARPA money and the ESER money. I did approach during Student Government Day, Councilor Stabard, but I didn't get very far with him, so I have been asking questions, I just don't know what to do, so I could use some input, so.
Member Vane.
Can I call? I call up Mr. Donovan and look into it, Mr. Mayor?
Your, your, your question is about the ARPA funds?
Yeah, the ARPA and the ESER funds and the, the school fields.
Yeah, yeah, so for the ARPA, you know, we're going to be having a project submission process over the next couple of months, and we'll have information about how to submit a project. I think you would want to, if you're, if you're thinking about a project specifically for the schools, you know, then, then through the superintendent, and, and working with the superintendent to identify who, you know, who the superintendent would think would be relevant there, I would think would be a good place to, to start.
Because it's, it's very confusing, because Keeney Park is actually a park that DPW is taking care of, classical, the half-field is our purview, so that's why. I don't know, will be, will it be the ARPA or could it be the ESER funds superintendent? That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, so I mean, I think for the, for the parks, we are working to, to start to tee up those proposals for the, for the spring, because that was, you know, one of the, the themes that emerged in the, in the ARPA survey, the forums and the survey. So as we start to do an inventory of what those parks are, we, you know, we'll, our administration will coordinate with DPW and ISD and LPS as we, you know, coming up with a, with a plan, because for something like the parks, for something like the roads, the, the city needs to play a really clear leadership role to look at it all together, right, you know, and I mean the city broadly, like all of us, because those are, those are going to be city projects that the city does, and, and rather than having just one-off, you know, we'll do this park or that park, you know, how are we going to do the parks together? And so we're, we are, we are, that, that effort is in process and in consultation with the council as well.
Okay, because I know for a fact that Council Hogan is already writing up his proposal for the McManus Field, so that's when I, I'm trying to figure out who's going to write it up for classical, who's going to write it up for Behind English.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, obviously, we're running an open process. I don't want to get too, we're, we're supposed to be talking about the operating protocols, so I don't want to, you know, in terms of agenda fidelity and the open meeting considerations, but we, we are running an open process, right? So we're going to get a lot of different proposals, but, but I think it's important for, for us on some of these key issues, for, for us to have that, that comprehensive vision on, on things like the parks and the roads, so that we are making sure that nothing gets left out, right? You're not leaving it to chance about what's, what gets pushed forward, but rather seeing how they all fit together, so, yeah, definitely. On the protocols, I'll just say that I think, just as an example, I think we talked about that under number one, that second bullet tonight, believing students are best served by continuing discovery of and supporting the needs of family, staff, and all stakeholders, and I think that also speaks to the, the collaboration with city officials. We see these issues that cut across our respective scope and then work together to address them. I think that is so crucial to serving the needs of, of our students, and I think certainly a goal for, for our administration, I know everyone around this table, to make sure that we are all working together and communicating well, and, and I think that is being carried forward by the respective departments as well, the departments in the school department, working with their counterparts in the, in the, in the city departments, and I think that's all to, to great benefit to what we're doing here, so. Always, always good to, to remind us that that's the goal, right, because that's really important, and, and it takes a little bit of effort, extra effort to make sure that you're reaching out and, and, but I think, I think that's definitely something that we can continue doing.
Member Magnolia, Member Castellanos.
So I want to do bullet point number one on number one, because I, I think this is something that is so easy to forget, which is to plan backwards always. What is the experience the student is going to have, and what do we need to put in place to ensure that that student has that experience? And I think that whether it's talking about who we're hiring as social workers as that comes up, if they're going to speak one language, two languages, three languages, or what we're talking about are, you know, trends of students staying in school or completing school, I, I think that that has to always be our starting point. We have to always start with the experience of the students and go backwards, and, and I, I want to say this as somebody who brought a curriculum subcommittee agenda item forward at the bequest of students, that it doesn't matter if they're in middle school, high school, or elementary school, if they need something from their educational experience they are not getting, it is our first and foremost job to ensure that they do get that, and, and there are multiple ways in which we can enact that for them. We are their agents in that sense, and I, I think we would do well to remember that we are here for them first, everything else comes afterwards.
Thank you. Member Castellanos.
Thank you so much for bringing this up and putting this on the agenda. I do enjoy seeing John Ford's name while on there, you know, I don't think, he's probably still watching, so. So I want to highlight the, on dedicate ourselves to establishing and maintaining effective communication, the point of welcome all family, staff, and stakeholder concerns and complaints, and assistant directed them to the appropriate person within the district chain of communication. Sometimes, you know, we, we catch constituents in the middle of a crisis, we do a lot of crisis communication on this job, from phone calls to emails to social media, the accessibility this past term was increased by like 100 percent. So I just want to first of all thank the, the district and the superintendent, the welcome center, the, the different positions that we've put in place to increase communication, because that, that was something that we really needed to improve, and to, to, to hold this point in, in a perspective that is, is respect to our constituents and the students, like going back to Dr. Magnolia's point, that's where we get our calls about, so families, kids, and, and also staff, and it's just, it's been, it's been really helpful to have that, that open communication and, and also direction, because it's sometimes I don't know, I have questions that I have to direct to, to Mary that might not, you know, I might have to go to Dr. Tutwaller, I don't know where exactly it's going to fit, but it's really conducted in a timely fashion. I appreciate that very much, so I want to say thank you, and I do appreciate these operating protocols, and it's, it's good to revisit, I like this exercise, you know, to go into, it's a reflection, you know, and we, we develop these under different circumstances, and again, we're, we're all in a transition to, to move forward, to move this district forward, so it's good for the members here to, to, to have a thought and input on this because it's a together type of business here, so thank you.
Great, thank you, everyone. Superintendent's report?
I have one. At the March 31st School Committee meeting, we bore witness to a presentation on blended learning. While the approach is not new, it represents a shift in Lynn that is responsive to the times, deeply student-centered, and innovative. The guest speaker, a national champion for the model, celebrated the rapid growth and expertise in Lynn among Lynn Public Schools teachers. This is one among few areas, one, this is one among the few areas of recognition in the teaching and learning space. The other is a creative and cutting-edge work that is happening in meeting English learners' needs. As you know, over the course of the past 10 years, the district has experienced a significant increase in the number of students who qualify as an English learner. At present, 38 percent of the Lynn Public School student body qualifies as an English learner. I have often declared that a good school district, declared a good school district as one whose core values are known and whose actions reflect those core values. Another key quality is the district's ability to change with the community it serves. This is happening in the realm of servicing English learners' needs. In the graduation push-out presentation, we can claim steps in the right direction, both with the increase in the number of English learners graduating in four years and the decrease in the number of students in this subgroup being pushed out. There are many factors that contributed to this desirable trend. There are particular shifts that are clearly paying dividends. Four years ago, we launched a major programmatic shift at the secondary level. This involved including thematic instruction, the incorporation of ESL in student schedule that meets DESI regulations, an intentional focus on scheduling qualified and experienced educators with our most underserved students, and a year-long push-out prevention committee to focus on areas within our control that can support keeping our Ls in school. We still have much work to do, and we're not resting on these gains. The point here is to name the shifts we are making to accommodate who we serve and acknowledge the hard work and expertise behind these shifts. It behooves me to mention that I'm not the only one who sees the extraordinary value in the work done to support English learners. In recent weeks, Rania Caldwell, the Executive Director of English Learner Education, was selected to serve as one of the Northeast Representatives for the National World Class Instructional Design and Assessment, or WEDA, Local and Education Agency Advisory Committee. There, the, there are two representatives for each region, Northeast, South, Midwest, and West, to serve for a two-year term. Representatives will advise, advise on the WEDA tools that will be used across the nation. In addition to this being a real testament to the expertise that we have right here in LPS, this is a unique opportunity to gain insight to the tools that can be used to support LPS students. Finally, I want to recognize the English, English Learner Education Department for successfully attaining a state grant in the amount of $299,000. Funds will, funds will support a grow-your-own model for dual-language programming and enhance multilingual libraries in these classrooms. The grant award in total was the largest among all districts that received awards. The work continues. That is all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Being adjourned.